Town of New Paltz Planning Board Meeting for May 29th. First thing on the agenda is review and approval of minutes for April 22nd. Do you have a motion to approve?
April 22nd? I thought it was May 13th.
May 13th? Which one are you on?
We get the last agenda.
Am I on the wrong one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't... Well, we could do either one, right?
I think the...
We can do... No, we don't have a...
April 22nd was approved.
22nd. Okay. Okay. Excuse me. It's May 13th. Motion to approve the minutes.
So what?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let it show unanimous for the four people here. Second order of business is public comment. Does anyone have public comment?
Hi. I'm Mark Sherman.
Mark Sherman?
I'm from Boys Road in New Paltz in town. And I may come again because I see that over here. I want to say something about Park Point. I've expressed these concerns before and I'll keep expressing them. I will tell you it's nothing to this board, but I went to a ZBA meeting and was not allowed to say anything in that setting of life.
Anything you want to say.
Thank you. I have a number of concerns, but I just want to mention two of them. One of them is... Well, they're actually related. I don't know too much about Glomeroid, but from what I've seen on the internet, their projects have been pretty much in cities. If one is in Syracuse, I think another one is... Yeah, but if they're doing things in small towns, I haven't seen them. And that concerns me because if something is successful, whether or not it's been, I don't know, in a city, it doesn't mean it'll necessarily be fitting in New Paltz. I've been in this town for over 40 years, and there's a lot of discussion of quality of life, and I think we all know what that means. And it's just not discriminatory. It's this beauty here. I mean, I think anybody who's here knows there's certain things about this physical beauty, for example, that's fantastic. Related to that, and I've expressed this concern right from the start, if you drive down Route 32 going north, where coming from Janson Road, the project will be near your left. And I can't tell precisely, but the reason I want to say something to ZBA, apparently what was going on there was some variance on heights. There's a really beautiful view there, the mountains. To me, even having lived through all these years, when I come back here and I see the mountains, I'm still... It still does something to me. I think that's really, really important. I mean, a lot of other problems, and I'm aware of that as well, but I think the one I just wanted to mention tonight was that one. I think this place is beautiful. It's got a certain quality to it that cities don't have, and it's one of the reasons we're here. And I'm just concerned about that. And that's really pretty much all I want to say. And again, I may come again because there are a couple of you missing.
Please do. Come at any time you want.
But thank you. Thanks for letting me in.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Paul? Good. Well, we can keep it open. If anybody comes in, they can comment. Next order of business is to keep the public hearing open for Vlamos subdivision, lot line revision. And I guess we need a motion to keep that open. And I guess they have more information forthcoming, so we'll put them on the schedule as soon as they get back to us. Is there a motion to keep the public hearing open?
Make a motion?
Okay. One second.
You may want to set it for a specific date.
A specific date?
The next meeting, June 10th.
Did you get any indication from the applicants when you were...
The action is waiting for that last piece to be sent to Hudson. They should be ready the next meeting.
On the 10th? Okay. So to have a motion to keep public hearing open until June 10th? Planning Board Meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next order of business is application review for Vlamos demolition site plan. And we had asked them for details on a landscaping site improvement where they tear down the building. Dave, do you want to speak for that?
At the previous meeting, they were planning to take the building down and pave it and stripe it for more parking, and the board noted that there's already excess parking there. So it suggested that instead of parking to landscape it, maybe even put in some picnic tables or something for the public. So they have a detail. I don't know if everyone has the plan. The detail on Route 2 shows that they... This is what they wanted to say. They have two picnic tables. Three rotor dendrum, four azaleas posed in that area. Mike had made a comment about getting some kind of crosswalk between the Burger King establishment and this green area would be a good thing.
So there's... Are there additional parking spots happening, or that's no longer?
That's no longer.
Okay.
We'll leave it green, I think we said.
Got it.
Now, is there going to be a curb? Did they say there'd be a curb around it?
No. It's going to be flush for the pavement.
For the pavement. Think that presents a hazard at all for anybody sitting in the picnic table?
Looks like the picnic tables are into the green area. I wouldn't think so. That's pretty low speed through a driveway aisle there.
There are trees all around it.
Mr. Vlamos, do you want to have a seat?
That's my door. Claudia.
Thank you.
Oh.
We were just discussing the demolition plan.
Yes.
And proposing two picnic tables and some landscaping in that area.
So will actually be in the old footprint of that house?
Yeah.
Doesn't really seem...
Well, the house, because the table's...
Oh, I asked that. I thought that was around it.
There's a kitchen in there.
Yeah.
So we'll put a kitchen in there. How do you like it when cars go like this? When people... They're not dangerous for a kid to get hurt?
Well, sure that's dangerous, but...
I think it's not fair.
Where would you anticipate that?
Would you do in McDonald's the same thing? Put a table in the middle of the parking lot?
Well, we would have a green space in the middle of the park.
You'd do it in Donkey Donuts?
It's like required.
So we'd do it down at Diner too? The same thing, in the middle of the park, you put a table?
I don't think it's really in the middle of the parking lot.
It's the middle of the parking lot.
Well, not really.
Why would you expect to have traffic?
I mean, after you know your space.
Well, having the traffic is a parking. There's a draw coming out of the plaza down there, and it goes up, down. So how can somebody sit down there and have the kid cross over and walk in? You know, I don't know. That makes no sense to me. But if you guys think that's the way it's got to be. But I haven't seen a restaurant anywhere in New York State has tables in the middle of the parking lot. In the middle of the enters. So let's put tables over there and see how it works. I explained to my insurers. They said to me, if the town doing it, it's okay. If they're doing it, if something happens, they're responsible.
Our main concern is really that you have enough parking space now.
We do have enough parking.
And there's no...
The guy doesn't need more parking.
No. We don't need more parking, and we don't want to pave over areas where it's not needed because it's better for the water absorption to have open...
Well, it has a drain right there, too.
Yeah, but it's still much better to have open space where there's not any pervious air.
There's not much water there to absorb.
Oh, yeah.
And the drain is right there anyway, so we can put another drain, something maybe.
What would you propose... What would you do instead?
Well, we'd keep the curb in the way it goes. You know, like, there's a curb in over here, and there's a curb in over here, and there's a curb in where the house is. We keep that curb in back there to make sure the road continues the way it goes. I don't know.
Yes, I mean, it's just...
You know, parking's got to be a parking. You can't put a table in the middle of the parking lot.
I just don't think it's the middle.
I'm confused. So in other words, you would just leave after tearing the building down, you would just leave the curb there and not put anything in the center?
Well, leave the curb over here so the traffic continues going the way it goes.
Okay. But what... My question is, what are you putting in the middle?
Nothing. We're not putting anything. It's part of the parking there.
It's going to be filled in grass there.
Yeah, we can put some grass over here with the curb, but this is part of the parking lot. They're not supposed to be there.
So this is where the house is coming down?
Well, this is where the house is.
Yeah.
Oh, this is the Burger King. Okay. But I mean, as a driveway going, we're going to put the curb in here, curb in here, curb in here, you know, I mean, to make sure nobody gets hurt. Put a curb in over here, so the traffic is going to continue flowing the way it goes. Nothing's going to bother me. But if you put a parking in... I mean, tables here, there's a car going by, car goes by, or no matter how you do it, you know, you don't want little kids to walk high up and down there. You know, they can walk, but I mean, it's more hazardous when you have tables, people sitting and playing in the ground. You don't want to put playground in the middle of the parking. It doesn't make any sense to me.
So should we put a curb around so the cars wouldn't just drive?
We'll put a curb in like we have here. We'll put a curb in over here.
Okay.
So then, you know...
And leave it open space.
Yeah.
But you're not...
How do you put a playground in the middle of the parking? I don't know. It doesn't make any sense to me.
So you would put a curb around the excavation?
Well, the excavation is over here. I mean, you know, this has got to be cleaned up because that's a big curb there. You don't want to... You know, you've got to make sure everything is safe. So what you have here, you put another piece over here.
Well, I don't think people are going to be driving right through the azaleas and brought it in, you know?
He's saying not to be there.
I'm not talking about driving.
No, I understand, but I'm saying if you think it's unsafe, at least there'll be some trees around. You know, it won't be like kids are just sitting out in the...
It has enough trees. The guy has more than 18 or 20 percent's grass over here. This side has a grass, and this side will have a grass. There's grass over here, there's trees over here, there's whole thing is grass. There's more than 18, 20 percent's grass on the property. So it's enough grass. I think we'll be okay if we make a safety over here correct, and let's leave it this along the way it's supposed to be.
Just as...
But what is it supposed to be?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a house. It's part of the parking lot. It's part of the business parking.
Is it going to be blacktopped?
Well, it should be blacktopped. We're going to fill up the hall, make sure there's not a hole there. We've got to make sure it's safe, I think.
But part of our plan is to not have excess parking, just because it's not as...
What do you mean excess parking?
Well, because we have enough parking.
What do you have against parking? This is America.
A lot. Because people should be walking and not driving.
Well, they're going to put another three, four, and three, four, six, seven more parking lots there, or four more is going to be...
Because it's more...
If you put tables over here, somebody's going to get hurt. Can you put tables and walking back and forth here?
You have to admit, that would be a liability. I can't... Cars drive down Main Street and in and around.
I mean, you put tables in the middle of McDonald's parking lot, and in the middle of Donkey Donuts, you put parking? I would do something like that.
Times of extra parking that's not needed.
There's two questions. One is, should it be open, green grass not paved over?
Yeah.
And the other is...
Green grass not paved over.
I mean, they could not do the tables if you feel it's going to be a liability.
They have enough parking.
I don't know.
But the second question is, should it be used for tables dining for people?
Yeah.
How people want to get in and out.
I mean, there's a beautiful house that...
Dumpster here is, you know... I don't know.
Initially, I think part of the conversation was had was to help save on the cost of blacktoppings. I remember...
What are you going to use, three, four tons of blacktop?
I would think that would be up to the...
You know, the things have to be correct. You're not worried about a couple of dollars to make the things correct instead of, you know, kind of, we don't want to look good in the cook.
I think that's something that New Paltz says people when they come into...
Well, I don't go against New Paltz. I plant over 3,000 trees in my property.
Well, I hope not.
Over 3,000 trees I put in my property.
Well, I'm just saying that what people say...
I plant. I got the bills. If you want me to sort it.
Is that what they want is open space, trees, and green, and not necessarily a whole field of parking spaces?
And I have to do it. I have to do it in acre land. The guy has more than 20 percent's green over there. Supposed to be 18. He has more than 20 percent. So we'll give him another 10 percent? Why would we make the whole thing green so people can walk over there?
Why not?
Yeah, okay. Let's put truckloads and topsoil there and manure from the horses.
On the other hand...
Parking for the burgers. It's already there, paved.
It's already there, paved, and that's part of the parking, you know? That house is part of the parking lot. I'm just taking it out from there. Because I kept it there. I tried to rent it, but nobody wants to rent over there. And the businesses, if they go there, they want to go for long term, and they want to fix it up, they want to do different things.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, that's on the way to the parking lot that nobody really wants to go there and have to be moved.
What if you left the curb, tore down the house, topsoiled it, you planted grass there and no tables?
The curb is too high, so somebody's going to fall down and hurt himself. I don't really want to have things that are not correct.
Yeah.
I want to do the job correct and leave the guy alone to do his business there.
Well, the curb's going to be there no matter what, right? Or are you going to take the curb down?
The curb is going to be here. We're going to put the first, the way, you know, the house, where is the house? House is over here. We're going to put a curb over here to make sure the traffic goes the way it goes. Like it has here, 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 and a piece of curb here, and this is going to become part of the parking lot, it's safe.
I mean, I don't want to tell someone how to run their business and their land, but over and over again, it's going to say that what they don't want in downtown New Paltz is just miles of asphalt. What we want is green space.
And I have to give... Why you don't do the same thing across the plaza and inside everything down?
That's because they have a house they're tearing down. Otherwise...
That house, that house has been closed. For how many years it's been there? Closed.
I know.
It's been hit with lightning. You know that light? The thunder?
Yeah.
Hit. The bricks, they're all over the place.
Right.
I'm trying to clean it up to make sure it's safe there. So if you people have something against safety and cleaning up, they don't know what kind of town I'm living in. I'm paying $100,000 a year, land taxes in New Paltz.
Of course we don't.
And if I'm no good, I don't know who's good. What's right?
How many additional parking spots is it going to contribute?
I don't know. Seven, eight, five?
Eight.
Eight.
But you yourself said that they're not actually necessary.
So it's necessary to let somebody get hurt?
We definitely don't want anyone to get hurt.
Let's do the job correct, and let's stop talking nonsense.
I think it's just a different interpretation of correct.
Okay. What's the interpretation? Let's hear it.
Well, I think your interpretation is that it won't be safe.
How will it be less safe if there's grass?
When you put a playground and kids go playing there and the cars go by and it's parking there.
Hopefully not.
Burger King is served with more kids and things like that.
Nobody has any suggestion putting a playground there?
Well, we have rest there. It's about kids to go around and playing around and kicking a ball or do something stupid.
People play next to kids. Tend to run around as parents or picking and picking.
They tend to run around.
They do. And that's surrounded by parking lots. Cars are moving in the parking lot.
So why don't you mulch it and put a bunch of bushes and trees there?
Why would not put it the way it is? And if the guys want to put bushes, the Burger King, I give them the property back, and they can put whatever they want to put if they want to put bushes in it. I give them the property back.
I guess you're thinking to make it like a blank, just more of a blank template for somebody to see potential with and to blend it in.
Want to put a temple there? You want to put some God in there, something?
Just a paved asphalt.
Should I put Saint Mary over there? Can I put a Greek god there, Zeus?
Oh, fine.
I can put Poseidon, the god of the sea.
Sounds great. So, I mean, it seems like...
If you put a fish store there, that might make sense.
I can put a fish tank.
I guess what you're saying doesn't jive with what you submitted to the planning board.
Yeah.
Well, what you people talking about, you want to destroy everything.
So you're saying you don't want to do what's in the plan?
What do you want it to do? What's on the plan to do?
Well, this is your plan. It says, area... Okay, it says backfill 90 percent cement, copter, area to then receive four inch topsoil seeded and mulched.
That's because you people asked him to do that. That's what he did. So if you want to do that, we do that. But I don't think it's safe.
The original request was...
The original request to clean it up and put a part of the parking there.
Well, we discussed it.
But if you want to do that, I do that. I don't mind doing that. But you people's responsible if something happens there. I think that's not safe, in my opinion.
Well, I think it's a green area. I think that's what the board was looking for on this.
Yeah, the board looking for... I don't know who's the board. Who are they? People say New Paltz. We're all the board. We all pay taxes over here.
Planning Board's...
And I think what's safe is what's necessary to be done there. It's a business there. As kids go there, the business is for kids, and it's to be safe there. If you want to put a grass and have the kids kicking balls and playing and fighting in the middle of the parking lot...
But there's really not much space for that.
Let's do an empty business in New Paltz. Why should be the only business with a green park in the middle of the green there to play ball?
We don't have many houses that come down.
There's really no space to play ball right now.
That's not. The house is not a house. That's a commercial piece of property there.
Okay. There's not many structures in the middle of a parking lot.
That structure is...
There are advantages to green areas over there.
It's banned there. It's supposed to come down from the beginning, that, before the Burger King was built. It's supposed to come down that building over there. That building was supposed to come down. It's part of the parking of the company.
It's had several tenants. This parking in this area is required by the Burger King?
It's the Burger King property. That's their property. They control that property. They're in control.
You said it was part of their parking?
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Is that pursuant to their lease? And is this creating parking for Burger King?
Yeah, that's creating parking because it's their property. I'm just taking the house out because I thought I was going to lease it, but it's difficult to lease it there because it's in the middle of the parking.
Who owns the house? Who... I mean, who is the actual owner of that property?
I'm the owner of the house. I bought the property. I'm leasing to Burger King, but that property belongs to the company, to the Burger King.
Okay. When you lease, generally you go home. So I'm confused by the way you put that.
No, I control the house. But now I'm taking it down.
Right. So you own the house, Burger King leases property from you. They don't own the property. Does your lease require you to provide that as parking area for Burger King?
That is supposed to come down. I told them after so many years I was going to take it down.
Right. But what... You said it's Burger King's parking.
It's going to become part of the parking. When that building comes out, it's part of the parking.
Okay. But that's going to be used by Burger King?
Right.
Which wasn't for the Burger Kings?
Right.
So you're amending Burger King's plan?
It's good.
This... Are you amending Burger King's plan? So this is going to show parking for Burger King?
Well, that's the business parking. You know, this is the parking. There ran a square acre, all right? The house is right here in the middle of the acre.
Right.
Okay? And they left it alone because I took a car and I ran. So I can be there. So I can rent it. So I'm taking it out of there.
Right.
So I don't need it anymore. So it's a big deal, take a house out of there? There's no need to be there. It's been hit by lightning, too. It's got bricks all over the place, falling down.
I'm just trying to understand. You said it's Burger King's parking.
Yeah, that's the company. They're leasing the whole property.
So they lease the whole property? If they let you keep the house there, and you take the house out, they're going to be able to use it as their parking?
But they have...
I told them, when I take it down, I fill up the hall, and it becomes part of the
But I don't think that was part of their plan when they came in to, you know...
It wasn't part of their site plan, so...
What's the... What it has to be done? Not taking it out of there?
Well, no, we just have to, you have to have a site plan which does what you...
Well, I thought we have a site plan.
No, I mean, I think it's all...
You have a site plan that shows green area in there?
Yeah.
All right. We put a green, if you want, if you want a topsoil, then we'll put a green, we'll put a green.
There's no problems on our end.
But I'm saying, in my opinion, it's not gonna be correct, it's not correct to do.
Do you own the property and you want to do something different with it? You need to change the plan?
I'm not doing anything different.
So you're okay with doing what's on this plan right here, except that you don't think, I mean, you know, you don't wanna do something that, you don't wanna, we don't want you to leave feeling like you're doing something unsafe that we're forcing you to do. I mean, that would be sad. So, I mean, what is your opinion on, like, the safety of having the trees there and the tables? I don't know, it just seems like we're having a difference of opinion.
I don't like putting a playground on somebody's parking lot, on somebody's business.
Not every green area is a playground.
Doesn't seem, doesn't seem right to me, but if you people think that's what it's supposed to be, I don't mind doing it.
Every, every parking lot...
Fill it up and I put a grass if you wanna put it.
Every parking lot in Newport has a green area.
It has a green. I'm not saying it doesn't have. We have a green more than enough over there, it's more than the government requires.
But there are no children playing in those. I mean, if you go to Stop &amp; Shop, look at the green areas, I haven't seen children play there.
Stop &amp; Shop doesn't have a serving food.
They're like little skinny malt, mulch areas with just flowers planted.
Yeah, but every, I'm just saying, every area has green areas.
I don't see a green area on that parking lot, I disagree with that.
Right here is gonna be a green area over here. It's gonna be the green area over here, and this is gonna be the thing, they have, all this is green, all this is green, this is part of the property.
But McDonald's is not coming in right now.
This is all green over here, and this is all green there.
That's the difference.
Okay? It's more than thirty percent's green over there. Supposed to be eighteen, it's more than thirty. So you wanna put another corner over here, so we make the whole thing to green. Why I have to have fifty percent's green and everybody else has to have eighteen percent? I already have thirty percent.
If everybody else is here today, you know...
But this is a plan that was submitted to us, we approved it. We're about to approve it.
I say, I do this, but I say it doesn't look, to me, it doesn't look correct. If you think it's correct, I go ahead and do what you're saying, I'm gonna do.
It just seems like sort of like random landscaping as opposed to just blending it. It is a parking lot right there, and if vehicles are moving through, why not make it flat? Less liability, you know, but nothing for anyone to trip over and nothing to entice people to hang out.
I mean, don't we have enough lawsuits in America? Do we have to...
I mean...
Don't we have enough parking lots in America?
We need more parking?
It's my question. I think we need more green space than we need more parking lots personally.
I say to you, I don't know if you follow me, what I'm saying. It requires eighteen percent, we have thirty percent.
No, I got you.
We have thirty percent, we have more than, more than what it's supposed to be. Why we have to make more green, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. But looking at it from my side, on the exact opposite, you have the required amount of parking, so why have more parking? You know what I mean?
Another six cars of parking to make it, another five, six cars of parking to make the things to be correct without somebody getting hurt. To me, I feel better to sleep and have somebody getting hurt and somebody crying babies over somewhere.
Well, this is the plan you brought in. Are you okay with it? Because it's so...
If you people think it's okay, I'm okay with it, you know?
One thing with this plan, it's, it says proposed tables, doesn't sound like it's yeah.
Yeah, if you don't wanna do the tables.
I'm not happy with having a tables, but if you wanna put a tables, I'll put tables. I don't wanna put tables in there.
I think that was a suggestion that came from the person who was here.
I think so too, yeah.
But I don't know that it's...
That was not even the most.
Well, the gentleman who was with here, we made suggestions and he seemed to agree with it at that point in the year, so...
He was representing you, I think it was his suggestion.
They made him go back and three, four times, okay? I pay money for every time I come here, I pay you guys.
Absolutely.
I don't know what I'm paying, but I'm paying him and I'm paying back and forth for something. I just wanna clean up. If we can't even clean up and we have to pay back and forth...
Yeah.
I don't know where we're going and what we're running, what we're doing. I'm paying taxes to this town.
Absolutely.
And the only thing I'm doing right now, going crazy, talking nonsense. I'm trying to do the thing correctly to make sure nobody gets hurt, to make sure everything is done correct. And my insurers will be happy. Because it's not just me only, or you, or anybody, it's other things involved besides us.
Well, there's still some things you want to, I see, you can go with this plan. I can speak for the entire board, but we're inclined to approve it as is.
Yeah, so that's, that's a, probably what we're gonna do.
The, the lease is resistance. If you want to, of course, you can withdraw this plan and submit a new plan.
Well, he had a, he had a plan before, the way it's supposed to be done correct.
Was there an original?
And you people made him, you people made him to do this. You people made him to do this. So if you wanna approve this plan, plan this plan.
I disagree that we made him do it, we gave him suggestions and he was supposed to go back and discuss it with you.
Yeah.
So they were totally optional, 'cause I'm, my understanding from my father has been that this was, it was told that that's what you had to do. And then it cost him money to draft new plans.
It's absolutely not necessary.
I'll go ahead and do this.
So he had, he could've totally said, we disagree, we're not doing that.
But the original, the original plan, the plan you saw before, which you have over there, that's the one I wanna do. The original plan. This thing, I don't mind doing it, but I think it's, it's not correct.
There's no way I'm gonna vote for excess parking space to make it flat.
This is in front of us now, and we're about to, we're willing to...
And now we're making multiple steps and it's like we're arguing, but we don't know what we're arguing for.
But we're willing to approve this. If you wanted a different plan, whether it was an old plan or whatever...
You have the two plans, you have this plan and you have the other plan.
It's no longer pending.
Okay, not longer pending. Well, I approve this thing, I forget everything else. I'm not tired going back and forth and paying all these things.
Because there's no reason that the planning board would approve a plan with excess parking spaces. I, I, in my view, I'm not, I'm not being for the whole board.
You're against the business in Newport. I don't know why you're against business in Newport.
Of course, I own a business in Newport, I own a building right over there.
But if you own a building, what do you do, you build? You put a parking in the middle, the tables in the middle of your parking lot?
I only have four spots.
You put greens?
But...
Well, take the four parts and put a green there.
Yeah, I'm trying to get rid of parking, I wanna put a more...
I think we know what your opinion is, if you wanna pull this proposal back and revert to the other one?
We'll look at that one.
We'll look at that one.
The one thing I would say is you could consider this plan without the tables.
Yeah.
If the applicant doesn't wish to...
Why don't we do that? Then it's a compromise in that case.
What I'm saying, if you have a grass there, a kid's gonna go play around over there, and you have cars there, there's a parking there, and I don't like to have too much empty space in the middle of the parking, people to play around. That's what my opinion is.
Don't, don't put the grass in, put mulch and put the bushes in.
Yeah, exactly.
That's great.
Put the mulch and put the bushes.
And then... Why, why I have to have, why I have to have fifty, fifty percent of the property green?
Why do you have to have fifty percent of the property?
Yeah, only requires eighteen, and I'm giving thirty, and I have to put another twenty.